It's six o'clock, it's time to call the order of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission tonight. If you will, please stand and we'll do the indication by Robert and the pledge by Jackie Westerfield.
To bow with me this prayer. Dear Father, we come to you saving the Lord. Thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity to meet here, Father. We come to you tonight, Lord, asking for wisdom in the decisions that are made here by this board, Father, may be beneficial to all present, applicants included, and the residents here in the city of Mount Pleasant. Father, we pray that when we leave here tonight, that you protect and guide, direct our steps, continue to lead us in all things we do. Just want to glorify you and give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pray that you live in the glory of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, ever since the firstborn.
Okay, thank you. The minutes reflected, everyone's in attendance tonight for our meeting. Out of number three is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
I have a motion.
Second.
A second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Please, the second. Okay, thank you.
Number four, approval of minutes prior to meeting, August the 10th, 2021.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, plat approvals?
There are none, Chairman.
Number six, rezoning requests?
There are none.
Number seven, annexation requests?
None.
Number eight, site plan requests, and I'll turn this over to you at this time.
Yes, sir. I want to thank all the board members for being present tonight and all present in the audience. Tonight, we have on the agenda PC 081021 SP1. Aptipants, Mr. Johnny Potts, who's not present at this time, I don't see him present here, submitted a site plan for review concerning the addition of a building to his current operation at his business at Cali Container. Also, a standalone addition of another structure on that same or on that property there. Basically, the property is located 105 South Park Drive. The purpose of this of Mr. Potts' request, according to his application, was that it's to support development construction of a 7,500 square foot addition to his existing facility and as well as a construction of a 4,032 square foot accessory structure to accommodate the business needs at Cali Container. We've been looking at this site plan for quite some time, provided comments in your planning packet as well. There are comments were provided to the engineer and owner of record. Conversations have taken place. There's been attorneys involved as well as our city attorney. And in essence, the comments is going to reflect that the use of the addition to Cali, nonconforming, so it falls in the nonconforming right to build that addition. The accessory structure is a standalone structure and it's, our knowledge, is not on the same property as the business, so it don't carry with it the nonconforming status that the existing building would. We addressed this in comments. We've spoken with Mr. the surveyor, and I can't recall his name right now, spoke with him. He submitted a initial plat of survey. I believe that was included in your documentation as well. And when we addressed the lines, they were then removed on the plat, but there's no survey of record to show that that has actually been done, other than just simple, simply removing them as the surveyor. So, the standalone structure is really what's in question here, as well as utility easements associated with that property. According to the documentation that we have, of course, that y'all have been provided, there were several comments, and I'll start off on C1 of the plans there. The zones M1 and M2 no longer exist in current zoning. That's on C1 of the plan set that you have. We indicated that correct zoning information should be identified on all notations in sheets. In our previous zoning, we had M1, M2, M3. Heavy industrial, or light industrial, heavy industrial, and I can't remember what the M3 was designated for, but we eliminated those and went to two zones, heavy industrial, light industrial, when we updated our zoning. And they incorporate a lot of permitted uses, a lot of permitted use in on both of those. However, on a site plan that's being brought to the planning commission, one of the requirements for zoning text is to correctly identify what zone that the property is situated in. It hasn't been done, to my knowledge, has not been addressed to this point. What you have before you is the last documentation that I've received. Comments were forwarded, and these comments, as you see them, were exactly what was sent to the engineer and the owner of record. So, that being the number one comment on the first page there, it has not been addressed, to my knowledge. I have not received any of documentation. If you go to C0, which is the cover page there of the documentation, I missed a comment there, and I included a little south comments sheet here for y'all to look at, highlighted those sections I'll be speaking of. We asked the engineer, please remove this statement. We also indicated that the engineer could request relief from the planning commission for landscaping, but to simply say on the cover sheet, no landscaping required, is not compliant with the zoning regulations, number one, and it's not the engineer's decision to make that adjustment without permission from the planning commission. We asked him that he remove that comment on the first page saying no landscaping required. That has not been corrected, to my knowledge, either. And it will carry on to C2. I'll go over a couple of those comments, the couple of comments that we addressed. We asked the engineer in our reply back, the highlighted section there that you have, the arrows pointing towards, of course, he's indicated, as you can see, 10-foot gas line setback required, 10-foot water line setback required, so on and so forth. We asked, simply, are these easements recorded? There's no evidence that they've been recorded. The surveyor, even in his documentation, indicated that no utilities, it was a field survey, in essence, so no utilities were specifically located by the surveyor at the time of his survey. And also, we asked the question, do the various utility providers provide on these, agree on these buffers? Now, I have public works here as well. As you well know, if you're familiar with the site, most of your utility lines are going to run right up South Park. And in relation to the accessory building, the standalone building, by measurements, by looking at this documentation, it's definitely not 10-foot from the easement, from the lines. So, that puts it in a precarious position for building. The utility public works director could speak to that if y'all have any further questions, but I do know that our utilities, Mr. Tom Roberts did go out there, I was not with him, but he went out there on site and they were questioning the gas line location. And he went out there on site and found where the gas line was. Now, whether he measured 200 feet or just five feet and found a gas line, I don't know, I wasn't present. I do know, just according to him, that the placement of that building is certainly less than 10 feet from the utility easements, prescriptive easements even. That even though they might not be recorded, documentation done by the city, prescriptive easement is generally 10-foot, and that gives first slope and any digging that might have to take place and so on and so forth. So, as to this comment specifically, all we're asking of the engineer is, number one, are they recorded? And, you know, if they are or if they aren't, have you got utilities to agree to these buffers that you're saying are required, but you're not showing on the plans? Says required here, there's no indication on the plans that it's going to meet 10-foot off of there, that we can see, other than on the rotation. There's no recorded documentation. Then on that same C2, the next comment that we provided, the requirements and what is shown on the plan should be in correlation with each other. So, we just basically indicated that those easements need to be somehow notated and dictated on this plan, other than just a notation saying that this is what's required. We need to see proof that it's going to be provided, not necessarily that it's required. We know the requirement. So, we just asked that it be correlated back to the plan, and there's a way to do that. Surveyors do it all the time. You locate the utilities and you provide that documentation saying that, you know, this meets this criteria because it's this distance from the utility easement. That has not been corrected, to my knowledge. On that same page, C2, there was a third comment that was highlighted very bottom of the page. Proposed building B, which is the standalone structure, is clearly over the current building setback line, which is 50-foot in light industrial and heavy industrial. Now, there's some discrepancy here, and the owner's not here, but I will bring up a point that he would have had, had he been here, I'm sure. Under the guise of the old zone, there was a 10-foot setback. I don't know if y'all remember that correctly or not, there was a 10-foot setback property.
Yeah.
For a long time.
For a very long time, that's correct. Yes, you are correct. And when we updated our zoning text, zoning regulations, and our map, for lack of, I guess, being inconsistent, we reduced our industrial zones down from three to two. We did allow more permitted uses in both of those zones as a result of the reduction, but we also understood during the planning phase and updating our zoning regs, that because of those intensive uses, we needed to increase our setbacks. That's, that was one of the main reasons we increased our setbacks to 50. We did it in both zones, 50-foot in the heavy industrial, 50-foot in the light industrial. And if you look historically, if you have a heavy industrial, that's typically, you're going to have 25 or 50-foot or even 100-foot. In our M3, our old zoning, it was 100-foot setback on property because the use was intensive. And once again, I thought that was, we gave some when we updated our zoning by allowing more uses in each zone, but then to be fair to neighboring properties, we felt at that time it was better to adjust the setback in both to 50-foot. That gives a good buffer from any other adjoining properties, regardless of what that use is intended to be. Now, in our new zone ordinance, we do have an A, B, A buffer, a B buffer, and a C buffer. Those get more intensive as you go along, but those are extra requirements outside of your setback. Setback is your first line of buffer for any property. So, we simply asked the engineer, proposed building B is clearly over the current building setback line. We asked, will there be a variance request from Board of Zoning Appeals forthcoming? And the paperwork that was submitted does not reflect that there was a variance request for that.
So, let me interrupt you here.
Yes, sir.
What you've told us so far here, they haven't tried to do anything to meet the requirements.
To my knowledge, no, sir. I have not received any other documentation.
Well, you know.
That's correct.
If we're not doing that, I don't see any further discussion.
Okay, and that's perfectly fine.
We will say, so, the last meeting, you deferred it to give me extra time to talk to their attorney. So, we did receive a letter from George Dean, who is, is that in there?
It's in there.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we received that letter. Robert and I both responded to Mr. Dean via email explaining basically why we're still not quite agreeing on which zoning applies, and just, Robert summarized it, but the more condensed summary is, I do believe that building A, the one that's an extension of the existing structure,
Correct.
That would be nonconforming, grandfathered in to M2 zoning, including the setbacks. I think we all agree on that part. The issue just is remaining, as far as zoning, the setbacks and the placement of the easement for that building too.
That's correct.
So, those are the two things that we're... I think it's a different property. We've asked for more information. If that's untrue, we'd like to see that approved, but at this point, we're still waiting on them to...
I agree, and I think it's something that needs more discussion and stuff. I mean, we can't go in halfway on something and not know the whole story.
Right, as I was saying, if this is not two different projects, then, you know, we can't hold it.
They're not, this is two different ones though.
Because they got it on one.
Right, so this, I think what Robert's telling you is, this right here, the document that you have in front of you could not be, or should not be approved, he's not recommending it be approved because it doesn't meet the...
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Because we're still waiting on information that has been...
I agree, I agree.
The, if you'll let me just expand on just what she said just a few minutes ago, I think the discrepancy here is, and we've asked for proof of this, if you have indeed combined the properties, okay, that this is a what-if situation, if you have indeed combined those properties, number one, we need proof that it has been legally done. Then and only then can we even look at possibly nonconforming for proposed V. And the only reason we can look at it then is because it's under one parcel, but that being said, it still might not meet the nonconforming statute requirements. But that's the only time, we can't move past the point that they have not presented proof that...
It's still not meeting the requirements.
It's not meeting the requirements of the regular site plan, and it's not meeting the requirements for returning any type of information that we have.
Don't they have to come before the co-board in order to combine the property?
They have to come in front of the planning commission.
They're supposed to, when they plat something out, yes, ma'am, they're supposed to bring it here for a...
Rezone.
Well, it would be moving the property lines in essence to this property. Now, I have seen people quitclaim that stuff, and that's done all the time, and it's recorded as just one property, so it could go that way.
Right, okay.
But most of the time, generally, what you'll see is, it's the combining properties that were, if they're re-subdividing properties, they will come back before us with a plat.
Right.
But if they did that after the fact, after the zoning changed, isn't that a whole nother problem? Because, I mean, you could quitclaim anything after the zoning because you can't, I mean, it's a whole different problem then even too.
That's why we're trying to figure out the details of what happened.
The legal analysis would change if the facts are different than what we assume they are, and we're just trying to make sure we know what the facts are.
So, if they quitclaimed before the zoning changed, it could possibly be, the whole property could possibly be grandfathered.
Well, that along with other things that need to, that would need to be looked at, but that, I mean, we haven't got to that point because we haven't received any proof that either it's still three parcels or it's been combined as one property.
Somebody needs to do their homework here.
And it depends on when they quitclaim it. If they, you know, if they did it, if they did it after, I mean, after we had redone the codes, then it's still...
But the owner still has to prove a vested interest regardless of when they quitclaimed it or when they combined the property.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
They still have to prove a vested interest to this board.
And right now, I didn't see that in the paperwork.
Reading both of the documentation provided, this might be a question for Cory. In 2018 is when the aisle changed, so if the new building had been under construction at that point, it would have been grandfathered.
That's correct.
But they're applying for a new construction, is that how I'm reading it?
That's correct.
The way, the way I'm understanding it is that they are, they're trying to expand their business onto another parcel, which that, that section of the TCA that I cited in that letter that you're looking at, it specifically says it has to be the same parcel. So, you can expand your existing business in a nonconforming use if it's within that boundary. Problem is, we don't know what the boundary is. You know, we think we do, but they're saying it's something different, and we just, they haven't proved that to us yet.
So, in essence, and I know we don't want to be the dead horse, and I'll move on after this statement unless the board has any questions, but there's been no return to my office in relation to any of these comments, and they were sent out with ample time to have the engineer address those.
They should.
They haven't came back.
And is it the reason why the engineer can't come talk to us?
Ma'am, I can't, I can't speak for him, I do know that...
Or email me again, I get up behind his desk, okay.
He said, he indicated, the last indication that I had from the owner was that he would be here.
He didn't make a speech enough, he's not meeting the requirements and stuff, I mean, a 15-minute speech in here from him.
Well, I'm not saying a speech, I'm saying so that if you're going to tell us that this is one property, then, you know, we can tell everybody, where is your proof?
We gotta have proof.
That was my thing.
But that's, that's what we're for the board tonight. I apologize, we're not having more information.
That's fine.
I was expecting to have return comments and something provided to this board. I can't force the hand of the engineer, I can only tell them what we expect.
Is this project still under a stop work order issued by your department?
That's another issue that was brought up prior to even the plan being submitted to our office, they started construction, and my office went out and placed a stop work order on it. Because site plan has to come from the planning commission, then your building permit, then you get to start constructing. They had started prior to any of that, I guess, hoping maybe that nobody would notice, and a stop work order was placed on the business to begin with.
Any more questions from the board? Not a in time motion.
I make a motion that we deny, what's that, on sheet, lack of information.
Oh, the sheet you're talking about for a rezon.
Yeah. Well, I make a motion that we deny this, at this, this request at this time, because we don't have enough information to qualify it or to accept it.
I have a motion?
I'll say it.
And a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, old business?
There is none, Chairman.
Number 10, is other business review with consideration of amendment to planning commission bylaws regarding Article 1, Section 3 membership.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate the board considering this business. We do have a representative from City Commission, also resident here in the city of Mount Pleasant, requested to bring this forward to board tonight. Unless the board has any questions for me, I will certainly pass it over to Mr. Davis, who I believe is...
He has signed up.
Okay. So, unless the board has any questions for me then?
I don't, we, you know, we're going to look at it and see what it's about.
Yes, sir, I'll step down then.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
Mike Davis, 6538 Old Lane, Columbia, Tennessee. That's bad to say, living in the city limits in Columbia, Maine, in a drift. Well, anyway, reason I've come tonight, I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to this. But I come also as a citizen, maybe also as a citizen than I do a commission. And when this was first brought up, when we was a regional planning commission, if any of y'all won't see any of this material, you know, I'll give it to you. But what happened was, back in 2018, Mount Pleasant was a regional planning commission. And at that time, you know, we had seven members, and two of those members was outside the city limits. So, then, when it was voted to do away with the planning commission, to make it a municipality, it was told at that time, you know, that you had to live inside the city limits. So, those two guys that lived outside the city limits had to leave their membership. They wouldn't, you know, they couldn't stay on. And then, which it went ahead and passed, you know, by the regular commission, this here was done by y'all, or not by y'all, you know, by the planning, by the planning commission. And then it was forwarded on to the, to the regular commission in which it was passed, you know. And now, you know, we have gone back and started getting somebody outside of the municipality. I mean, y'all might be okay with it, it's totally y'all's decision, not mine. I'm just speaking as a, as a citizen, you know, and I've heard from other people, you know, that it's almost like it throws them out of the equation. They're no longer, you know, can put any interest in it. But more or less, that's all it is. And when I asked Cory about it, the simplest way was to come in front of y'all and, you know, and put it in the bylaws that you had to live in, in the city limits, which, I don't know, when I read it, the bylaws or whatever, you know, I mean, I can read, it's like the Bible. Sometimes I'll interpret something different from what you do, but to me, you know, it's almost like it already should be that way. But it's like a historical, now, it says in it, you know, community. And to me, community means you can go outside. But the reason the commission passed the historical like that was because there was nobody on there that was experienced. So, everyone felt it would be better to have somebody experienced on the historical to help them get through. And, you know, who knows, another three or four years from now, they might decide, you know, to change their bylaws. I have no clue, that'd be up to them, just like it is up to y'all. But that's more or less all I have to say on this. I just think, you know, the citizens, you know, deserve those choices.
We appreciate it.
And in saying something else, I understand, you know, about the engineer, you know. And I have, you know, and that's good, I mean, maybe engineer does help, you know. I mean, and I don't know, this here is not against you by no means, you know. But, but it's just, you know, I just think the citizens deserve first choice.
Noted, noted. Thank you for your time. Any discussion from the board on this matter?
Just so, we've all kind of talked about this for a while, so, the planning commission membership comes from state law. So, the state law, like Mr. David says, you know, is possibly open for interpretation. It doesn't say that you have to be a citizen of the municipality, it just, it doesn't give really, gives a racial composition requirement, and that's pretty much the only, you know, even recommendation as far as the membership goes. So, we've talked about what the planning commission could do, and he's asking you to change your bylaws to say that a citizen, you have to be a citizen to be a member of the planning commission. So, I think that you can do that. The only caveat I would say is that the state law gives the mayor the ability to make the appointment. So, what you would basically be doing is making a recommendation to the mayor, whoever the mayor is at that time, to take your bylaws into consideration. So, you want to say, if you want to say, I'd like to have, you need to be... So you want to say, if you want to say, I'd like to have, you need to be a citizen to be on the planning commission. That's what our bylaws say. At the recommendation to the mayor would be my reading of the statute.
There'll be no binding there.
Right.
Because they won't have a final decision.
I believe that that would be how it would work out, but it would be, you know, it's guidance to, to the, to the mayor. And if, if you wanted that guidance to be that they need to be a citizen, I would assume that he would take that into consideration or he or she, whoever it is, uh, when these bylaws are in effect. But that's what he's, that's the request that he's asking you to make is to change the bylaws to say that you need to be a citizen of Mount Pleasant in order to be a member of the planning commission. This would be going forward. It wouldn't change anybody's seat today. Um, and my interpretation of the state law would be that it would probably be a recommendation to the mayor rather than a new trump card, if that makes sense.
But Cory, when we changed it to metropolitan, it's, uh, that was one of the, uh, one of the, uh, recommendations that it had to be. That's why we let the other two go. Otherwise, and the reason why we did that was so that we wasn't still covering the county areas, that we wasn't doing anything by anyway.
Right, so that, I was here for that. Um, when we were under a regional, when we were a regional zoning, regional planning commission, we were operating under a different state law.
Right.
And that state law said that you had to have however many members, two of which had to live in your urban growth boundary.
Right.
So it gave a restriction for those two members. It said two of them have to live in that boundary. So you can deduct from that, that the others had to live in the city limits, but you could have feasibly had all of them in urban growth boundary, you know. But what happened is when those, when we went back to municipal planning commission, those two members stepped down because we no longer needed them to satisfy their requirement. So I understand what he's saying too. Like, I've looked at this, it, it's been a more complicated question than I expected it to be. Um, but I do think you can make this change if this is something you want to do. Just understand that it could come up down the road, that the mayor, whoever it happens to be, says, I understand this is what the planning commission looks like.
But I'm still the mayor.
But I, it's my job to appoint, so.
And I did go back when we went from regional to municipal and I did, um, there might have been discussion. It's not in the minutes, doesn't mean it didn't happen, but there's not, there's no writ, written record of.
I can buy your mouth.
I don't, I don't, I was on this board and I don't recall.
The minutes that passed, you don't have anything.
Yeah, it's saying that you had to, I just know that we've sent a recommendation, we voted on going to a municipality. And it went for the, and then it had to go to the state and be okay from the state and everything like that because we know there'd be different bylaws on it, so. But I can, I can see what Commissioner Davis is talking about here too.
Because I mean, at that point, we could have kept the guys that were on here then, if it was just a matter of.
No, we, we went to five. We couldn't keep seven people.
But Cory's saying you could have possibly had the ability to have everybody on the planning commission that was in the urban growth area, not necessarily the city.
Yeah, I don't know that we even talked about it. I mean, I know we talked about these two were the urban growth people, so they stepped down.
And they always knew that they would step down, yes.
One of them was brand new.
Yes.
So.
And one of them had been on it for a while.
Yeah, so we may have, like Kate said, I, I was here, I remember this happening and I went back and looked at the statute. And that, all I can say for sure is that the state statute said that there had to be two people that were representative of that urban growth boundary, so. Um, and that no longer.
I think they had to be from each, each ends or something anyway, yeah, so.
Just for the board's knowledge as well, and I don't know if it, Cory might have stated this, but me and her both work on the bylaws that's presented and approved by the board. Um, most of the things that she's, ninety percent of this, ninety-five percent of this right here comes from state law. We don't, we don't try to change.
I'm sure, that sounds true.
We just try to mirror as closely as we can to what state law requirements are.
All right, we appreciate it. Any more discussion from the board?
If you make a change, I'd just like you to say exactly what you want that change to be, so we can put it in the, we'd still have to have a public hearing, I think, to change the bylaw, but we would make this change and bring it back to you.
Yeah, so if there's a change, anything, any direction.
Is there something that might need some further discussion?
Yes, I mean, I'm.
You thought it was what?
State bylaws.
No, the bylaws are yours. So what the, the, there's a state statute that says what the composition's supposed to look like and it gives some rules about that. And then part of that, part of that state statute, I'm doing this because that's what it looks like, but part of the state statute says the planning commission has the authority to adopt rules for the transition, transaction of business, which shall include, but not be limited to, and it names a bunch of things. So that's how you get to create the bylaw. And so that's where I'm getting this, you have the authority to put in there what you're, you're wanting, because it's the transaction of business, so.
But there again, it can only be a recommendation, right?
That is my interpretation of the statute, so I'm not going to say.
I mean, I mean, we, we could sit here and discuss this for days on days, but and then say, we're going to do this, and then when it goes for the commission, you know, and mayor, you know, not, not saying whoever the mayor will, is still at the duty of the mayor to appoint.
Right, and then another example of this is I think some of the boards have seen from practical, you know, experience, that it benefits you to have engineers, architects.
Different skill sets.
Different sorts of professionals or skill sets on, on the boards. One of the boards, and I cannot remember which one it is right now, the state law says it needs to be.
Historical.
Historical zoning, okay.
Yeah.
It makes a recommendation to, if you have these people, you should use them. And so I think we've had this unofficial policy that that is what's preferred. Um, just because you've seen these technical issues come up on the planning commission and on historic zoning and BVA and things like that. So that's another example of something that is not really, it's a recommendation, but it's been followed, you know, for the most part, so.
Noted. Commissioner Davis?
I, another thing, Cory, I, I guess, which, you know, there's no doubt the mayor appoints. But, I mean, it's just like you say, you know, it can go the other way and the mayor can appoint. But it usually comes back to the commission as they vote. So, but is that saying that the mayor doesn't even have to come to the commission? He can just say, I want this person.
That, that, that's my, Commissioner Davis, that's the way it looked, because we went through this a few years ago in here when the mayor walked in here and fired all the planning commission. They don't want to want, but, and everybody challenged it, but it come right back to the mayor having the authority to do it.
So we, at the.
Am I correct, Jennifer?
Oh, I remember.
At the commission level, and again, I think there's one, one board that requires ratification, but we're basically doing that as a.
Ceremonial.
To make sure every, you know, it's the mayor's appointment, but we're ratifying, we're having the board ratify those appointments. So if it came down to it for the planning commission, does it have to be ratified? No, it does not. But it, we're, we've been doing it to show a consensus and an agreement.
But I mean, just like the word of commission is what I'm saying, you know, when he brings it to us, to vote on.
That's what I'm calling the ratification of the decision, so.
She's saying it doesn't need to be.
It doesn't need to be.
We, 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 it's almost ceremonial. We do it to show that we have a consensus on the board, but.
Because maybe if somebody said, oh no, that person was terrible for some reason, maybe it would.
People would, he would pull it back. Listen to that feedback, yeah.
Yeah.
It's y'all's call.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, I do. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, you, you're going to go through a lot here and make all these recommendations and stuff and at the end of the day, I don't care what they done. If, if I want to appoint Robert Archibald to the planning commission, I'm going to appoint Robert.
I don't know. I, I just believe if you have a mayor and the mayor sees, you know, that it's in the bylaws and it should come from the city. I think that mayor is going to look at that and he's not, he's not going to step over, over them bounds. At least that's my feeling. I may be totally wrong.
I agree with you, but I also think the mayor is going to do his best at all times to get somebody who's in the city limits on, on our boards.
He should.
But if there's a, a lack of some kind of skill that he feel needs to be on here, he might have to go a little bit outside that boundary. I trust, you know, the mayor to do the right thing and, I mean, they don't always do that, such as firing the planning commission once upon a time, but.
But anyway, you know.
I understand commission too. I understand, thank you. I entertain a motion. What correction you want to go?
This wasn't as a motion or, um, it was a discussion point, I think.
So this, we would like some feedback, you know, to know whether or not we need to start trying to amend this or not. And if you wanted to amend it, then we could, if you voted to say you wanted to amend it, then we could set it for a hearing, because there's a, there's a.
Five steps to be taken.
There, yeah, at least, you know, two more steps.
A hearing.
Right, so if that's something you want to do, we can try to set it in motion. If you want to talk about it again, you could do that too. I mean, there's lots of things you could do. It's up to y'all. We're asking for guidance.
You know, I, I think a citizen should always get first priority if they meet the qualification or what's needed on the board, but I don't think you should hamstring the mayor to, I mean, it's just a recommendation anyway.
Right.
I think we leave it alone.
Now, I would hope that whoever the mayor is would, would look at that to start with.
I know it's asking a lot of the board tonight. I mean, if y'all would like to reflect on this for the next month.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it's something.
Okay, and, and I will certainly, what I will do, Chairman, if it's okay with you, is just keep this as other business.
Right.
Uh, for our next month's meeting. And then that'll give y'all time to reflect and, and make your, you know, hopefully have some feedback that if y'all do want it changed, then we can certainly make those changes. Uh, but I'd like to give y'all time to reflect on that as well, if that's okay.
Do they have the state statute in that packet?
Uh, the state statute, I'm not sure it was provided. I think the bylaws were.
Bylaws.
I'll send the state statute.
And then if you have any feedback that you want to provide, if you just give it directly to Robert.
You can do that. You can email me, call me, talk to me, whatever the case may be. I'll be.
So we, we, we don't need any motion, any voting on this.
It was more or less for guidance, for a discussion, yes, sir.
Very good, then. All right. Next item would be staff presentation of update for design guidelines.
If y'all would pull this, uh, little folder out, uh, we'll go directly to the section that was changed, which is on page.
Thank you.
Which is on page 11, under section L.
Page 11?
That's correct, yes, sir. L, uh, alternative procedures and waivers. You see that? Um, a law had came down and I provided the copy of that, um, a little transcript of the law that had came down, uh, in relation to what the state, you know, the state makes changes and we have to follow suit with providing changes to our documentation. So, uh, what you see, you see a new document because this is certainly new as far as your eyes and aesthetics go than what the previous document was. And the reason being is because I updated the design. It's, um, your old design guidelines aren't going to look the same, but all that was just in formatting. The only thing that actually changed in the text was L. Um, and, uh, L, uh, the state law basically said that, um, zoning really, uh, shouldn't be done with components. If it's allowed by the building code, then it shouldn't be restricted in design guidelines. Uh, we didn't do that, yay, in our first design guideline.
I can't believe we missed it.
Uh, no, I, no, I, yes, we didn't do it. So that was a good thing. We didn't restrict components. Um, but, um, as a part of the state law requirements, you have to add that section in here. So, uh, we've drafted up a section to cover the state law requirements, which is alternative measures and it's as you see it. Um, so that is the only change to the document.
Very good.
Um, I don't know that I necessarily need an approval. That's why it wasn't listed as a motion. Um, I might be wrong in that, um, but I, I, I.
I wouldn't.
Vote to update to.
Just update, it's just an update to the design guidelines. And I have provided y'all a new copy of the design guidelines. Now, I will go on to say, um, at our next meeting, y'all will be looking at this book. On, uh, the next meeting, um, we, we'll probably start doing this a little more often because the planning commission is not only the planning commission, you are my designer review committee as well. Um, so architectural elevation, so on and so forth. We look at that on site plan anyway. But if we can start gearing, uh, some focus towards, um, design compatibility as well, whenever, when I send y'all's packets and we do a review, um, we start looking at things that that make sure as well. So please keep it in mind and just kind of keep this wiki, um, at all times, look over it. It is a good document and, and, and we invested some time in it, so, um, I think it gives us good guidance. Go ahead.
I think we may have miscommunicated, so I think they do need to vote on making the change.
Okay.
Just to, they're the one that adopted the design review guidelines in the first place, right?
That's correct.
So to make an amendment, I think you should vote.
I entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion. We approve this update to the design review guidelines.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, board and staff comments.
None.
And number 12, we had our citizen comments, Commissioner Davis. And number 13, I look for a motion for adjournment.
Got it.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank y'all. Let's go, we.